While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the Chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone. Alright, so with that, we will get started first on item six, which is the ATM and STM warrants. So just as a lead into this, I think we have three categories of things to discuss tonight. First, we still have three articles to be approved. Possibly one could be approved tonight, that's Article Second, but we'll get to that in a moment. Articles Three and Five, I think we still have to wait for the FinCom and to see if the numbers are changing at all relative to Masco. The second item has to do with the operational budget. And at the FinCom meeting on Monday, the 21st, it appeared that the budget was about $416,000 over budget. In addition, the three requests from us, which was the $8,000 for the Digital Communication Coordinator, the $35,000 for the Planner, and the $123,000 for the two firefighters, were not included in that number. So if you add in those three items, it brings up the over-budget number to $582,000. So the FinCom had also stated that they would like to keep the infusion of cash, free cash, at about 1%. And that is 1% of last year's operational budget, which was about $27 million. So that would be about $270,000 free cash, which they said they could round to $300,000. So that still leaves us $282,000 over budget. Kevin will speak in just a moment. He believes that he and Catherine have found a way of covering the $282,000, which he will present to the FinCom on Monday. Before Kevin shares that approach with us, I'd just like to keep it at 20,000 feet for a minute. On Monday and Tuesday, the two FinCom meetings, one of two things can happen. FinCom can approve Kevin's approach, and the budget is balanced with the three items, three of our requests being included in that number. Or FinCom doesn't approve it, and they come back and they say, "This is what is in a balanced budget, and here's what's over." And then we can make a decision at that point, either we withdraw our requests for what is over, or we ask for an override. So anyway, that's the second item about the operational. So Kevin will be speaking about that in a minute. And then the third item that I'd just like to put out there for some additional discussion is Article 14, "The Police Cruiser." Some of the discussion at the FinCom meeting was about the things that we don't know. And we know what we don't know right now. We don't know whether or not we're going to buy a gas car or an EV. There are questions about the infrastructure that's required to support buying any more EVs. So there are a number of questions out there. The motion doesn't even address those. It just addresses the $71,000 being requested for a car. But if we look at when we'll have all that data and when we might be purchasing a car, it's probably in January of next year. So I'd just like to, at that point, discuss with our Town Administrator and the Chief, whether they feel that request is something they want to put forward at this point, or whether we just wait for next year because we're talking about maybe a six-month period without buying a new car, if we make the purchase in January. So those are kind of the three categories of items that I think are on the table to discuss tonight, plus just the verbiage for the master plan and the STM. Is that pretty much what everyone thinks are the items on the table right now?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree. I think so.
Alright, so starting off with the first one, the three articles that have yet to be approved. Kevin, do we have, I didn't see it on our latest copy, but are we ready to vote on Article Second, or is there still information coming in?
So one of the things on Article Two that we're discussing in an effort to, obviously, like I said, we're, I'll just say this, we're passionately trying to find a way to balance the budget this year. We had some unexpected costs that came in from economic. There's other drivers behind that. But I've said this at the beginning of the process personally, it's incredibly important to me that we do everything we possibly can to try to live within our means. And we're very hard to try to get there. So with regards to the Article Two, one of the things to balance the budget that we talked about more recently, look back historically at the Conservation Commission, and in Article Two, the contribution of $10,000, which has been in there the last, I think, the last three or four years. Prior to that, it was a $22,000 contribution for, I think, two years before that. So basically, what's happened is the accounts built up. And then when it's required or needed or asked, that they transfer back into the operating budget a little bit more than, say, the standard $10,000. I had a conversation with Heidi Gaffney today about the concept of that, to make sure that she would be comfortable from her operating. She has a $10,000 operating budget within her revolving fund. And right now, I believe there's $41,000 in that account. And her target was to keep at least $20,000 in there. And so that number at the $10,000 on that article, depending on how Monday goes, may or may not change and flex up to a $20,000 contribution from the $10 that's in there currently.
Okay, thank you. And then the other one, Article Three, obviously, we have to wait for FinCom. Article Five is from Masco, and it appears like there might be some discussion still about those numbers, or are those final?
The numbers are good and the language is good. The version I sent to you, I think, yesterday evening, since that time, we've been working almost around the clock. We've had some conversations with our auditor, I say "we," Catherine, Gabriel, our accountant, and myself, around the $143,000 debt that is reducing the tax levy this year, that's coming back as a result of a reconciliation of a debt exclusion that took place years ago. And so there's two options with that article, Madam Chair, that we're sort of discussing. It could stay basically exactly how it is, although we might, there might be a small tweak to that, depending on the conversation with the lawyer, a follow-up conversation with the lawyer, and again with the auditor, about the actual, what number I put in there for the actual appropriation itself, if it's the operating budget or if it's the net. And then the second part of that is, if there is any contribution of free cash on the $143, we might, auditor was suggesting putting it into this article, the language. There's also the mechanism of doing it in Article Forty, which is the free cash offset the tax levy. So the bottom line is, this one's still fluid as well.
Okay. Alright, well, let's jump right in then. At this point, I don't think we're going to be able to make any decisions after you give us your approach, Kevin, for trying to close that budget gap until FinCom meets on Monday or Tuesday. But if you can share with us what your thoughts are before going into that meeting.
Yeah, so. Let's go back to Masco then for a moment, before we leave that. So as I see it, and we do have two examples of how that may be written with and without the $143,000. But that is, using the $143 as it's written now, then essentially uses one-time funds to fund the ongoing operating budget of Mascanomic. So we ought to recognize that that is not typically the way you fund something, is with one, an operating budget, such as Mascanomic, with one-time funds. So I think we need to be careful, and I think it needs to be done, as I would say, with wide-open eyes, including the FinComs.
Well, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I was just gonna say, I have a slide deck, and that's one of the slides to talk about with everybody, specifically around the $143 and the conversations that we've had, and sort of how that would play out. There's been a lot of discussion today on it. And when we are ready, I'll share the presentation in its entirety, including that information as well.
I'd just like to add that I agree with Dick. I said, "This is fairly similar to using free cash to fund ongoing issues." And if you do that, next year, you're gonna pay the piper. That's the trouble.
So is FinCom okay with the school deciding that it's going to use the $143? It's basically giving itself free cash.
So is it, so, yes, so I'll just bounce right to that. So we'll go right to the $143. Do you want me to share the presentation, though, because I have information that might be helpful during the talking points?
Sure.
Okay. Debbie, can you allow me to share, please? And for what it's worth, there is no intention, it is bad practice to use one-time funds to fund ongoing costs, period. Period. It's not a thing we do. But what we've done historically in Topsill is we have something that's an offset to the tax levy, which last year, there was a contribution of $400,000. This year, the FinCom's looking at a 1% on that, which gets that number down to 280. So the reduction this year is impactful on us being able to balance it. And aside, though, is that that debt now comes on, that $143, which gives us kind of a double hit when it comes to a starting point from a tax levy standpoint and ways to balance the budget. So let me see if I got access yet. I do. Share screen. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes. Yep.
So this is an update, as we talked about, just by a status update, and I don't know why it's cutting this off. My apologies. Let me see if I can do something to change that. Bear with me for one second. And this was something we pulled together, very short window, so technical difficulties, but we'll be okay. There we go. Still kind of moving off. So budget status right now, town's currently less than 1.7% increase year-over-year on all of our expenses. This follows last year where we were about 0.27% increase year-over-year. Currently, there are three over guidelines, and that 1.7 does include the remaining over guidelines in that number. So if that, if those were not approved, that 1.7 would go down. Currently, of those, the three items that are up for FinCom further discussion and vote, which is the firefighters, the planner, and the Digital Communications Director. Mascanomic, right now, they met their guidelines at 2.75 on an overall operating budget standpoint. However, due to the enrollment swings and the two other communities decreasing and Topsill increasing, we, and this is the second year in a row, we saw an disproportionate increase on our end from an operational standpoint, which amounts to about 4.6%. If they reached the guideline locally at 2.75, we would have had $185,000 less cost that goes back to the schools. In addition, we talked about the $143, 887, that's the debt reconciliation of a one-time tax levy. What it does is it's created what we have on our, what we can raise is a reduction on the levy by that amount. That money has already been raised, it's already been provided to the Mascanomic, and now that money needs to be offset and returned. And because we don't have anything that's a debt exclusion to offset it with, it has to go down onto the levy to offset there. And then I do have a slide here, it's cut off, but the elementary schools have met the guidelines that were proposed this year at 3%. That was an increase from last year of 2.75%. The 3% does not include extraordinary special education, which is $86,000 this year. I have spoken with the schools, and there is a conversation underway about possibly a further reduction in their operating budget of roughly $44,000, which is to be determined. But that is something that's been discussed, and we're working with the schools closely to see if that's something we can see as, if it will become real. And then, I guess, you know, the question is, how do we want an override, which ultimately, that's the budget, right? So some of the model adjustments that we might make, we have the model that the FinCom has that uses sort of the score sheet as we go through the budget process. It incorporates all the revenues that we take, taxes, ambulance service, the local receipts. It takes into consideration all of our costs and the increases on those. It also takes into consideration different, other different levers that are built into that model to ensure that we're being fiscally responsible. And those are discussed each year, what level we need to appropriate funds to the different levels, levers. So these items in their entirety, except for the last bullet, have been discussed at the last two FinCom meetings. And at the last FinCom meeting, there was sort of a general guidance from them, no formal vote, but a general understanding and expectation of what might be acceptable. The snow removal has been removed out of the model, $50,000 reduction in the levy reserve. We set $150,000 levy reserve typically in the beginning. Many years, we do reduce that by $50,000, and what it acts as an additional buffer between what's being raised and the costs that we have for our services. We did have a conversation with our Town Assessor, who's indicated a $8,000 increase in the new growth would be acceptable and appropriate, as well as a $10,000 reduction in the line item for her abatements. So when abatements come, we have to pay abatements out. It was budgeted 160, that's now going to be 150. And then we discussed a little bit more about the ambulance service and the new revenue that's being generated out of that. And we have, since the beginning of this process, a number of months more information as well. And there's a general comfort with increasing that by $40,000, excuse me, $40,000 this year, as we took a very conservative approach based on enrolling three years. This will be a little bit more aggressive on the revenue side, but something that we felt comfortable with. FinCom was pretty clear on Monday night that the guidelines for the free cash offset the tax levy is 1%. Again, it was provided at $400,000 last year, which is greater than the 1%. But this year, they've said $280,000, which is roughly 1%, is the number to start with. The last item, and I said, I mentioned this has not been discussed Monday because it's something we've been working on the last day and a half, is the Masco debt. And so right now, there's been outreach to certain members of the FinCom individually, just to kind of not deliberate about it, but provide the information of what we're thinking so that they have time to consider it for their deliberations next Monday. But that's also there. I will say this, we reached out only after Catherine and I discussed it, had multiple conversations with our auditor around the concept, and ensuring that what we're doing is, it's sort of a one-time, based on the one-time money's coming back to the town and the impacts of that. It's unusual, it's an unusual item this year that this is happening. And I guess maybe, in my mind, some of the justification around considering that is that it is the one-time consideration on the debt. But also, I mentioned before, that that 280 number has been greater in the past. And we definitely try to be respectful of the FinCom's guidelines and their approach in helping us balance the budget and ensure we're being fiscally responsible. And then I mentioned the $44,000 from the schools. We are grateful for the partnership and their understanding of sort of the situation we all are in right now, we're trying to balance the budget. And then it's cut off with their town budget. Yep.
Just a couple of questions before you move on. So this $143, I'm a little confused. Is this already taken into consideration, to Dick's point, in Article Five? Have the schools already used this $144 in order to reach the number that they are presenting to FinCom?
The way it's presented is basically that they, I'm using the model, less the Warren article itself. The Warren article will reflect the model, but it's, it's a reduction of the tax levy by that amount.
I just don't know if we can use it in two spots.
So what we're doing, it's, I'm a person of visual learning, so I'm gonna do my best to try to explain it. And I've got my partner, Catherine, if I misstep or has better way to explain it. But we've reduced the tax levy, so our tax levy we're able to tax to is reduced by that $143, 877, in addition to some of those other safeguards above it that we talked about. And that additional reduction there is less money we raise to then be appropriated. And as such, if we do a free cash allocation to offset that reduction, it would get us to a zero from the raising, what we raised. Above it is the.
Maybe moving on, just because we have only a half hour, where Marshall's still with us. One other quick question, the $40,000 ambulance revenue increase. Is Catherine comfortable with that?
I will let Catherine speak, but I'll say that we worked on that number. We had 50, and then we tweaked it down to 40. That was the number that Catherine said she would be comfortable at.
And so what is our total ambulance revenues at in the model?
I think it's 162. Catherine, is that right?
So I don't have that right with me right now. But originally, I had increased the revenues by 50,000. So with the expectation that there'd be $400,000 in revenues, $100,000 going to the stabilization fund, $300,000. But again, looking at the revenues across the town and not just for the ambulance, I feel that we can increase it by 40,000 and still be fine with it, as a, almost like as if it's a new revenue.
So does that mean you're bringing it to 440 all in, Catherine?
No, let me actually pull it up. It's, I would be bringing it to.
162.
Is it 160? Sorry, thank you.
Yep.
But actually, why 162? Because every time we talk about what the ambulance is coming in, it's 400 or 440. It's something up at that level. Do we not really feel comfortable that it's going to be brought in? I know 3% goes to billing, but this is, 162 is a faraway number from 440.
So from 220 on, we basically have gone from fiscally at 220, the revenues were 1.6. Since that time, we've increased it by 200,000, usually increases by 2% to 3% a year. This year, with the current revenues, without the 40,000, I've increased it to 5% over last year's. With the 40,000, that's 8% over last year's. I did talk to the auditor about it. You know, last year, we had excess revenue from actual to, actual versus estimated. The difference was 700,000. General comfort zone is 400,000 to 600,000 is what you want to aim for. 700,000, she still didn't think was anything to be, she actually thought it was still kind of low, the difference between the actual and the estimated. However, I do feel that we'll still be on target with going at the 8% increase over last year's revenues.
Now, you're talking local revenues, so you've moved away from ambulance revenues to all local revenue?
Yeah, so when I look at revenues, I look at, I have probably about 200 items that I look at, and that all sum up in terms of your tax recap to like 14 or 15 items. But there's other areas where the revenues are going down. As I mentioned on Monday night, you know, we anticipate that the biggest number, which is the motor vehicle excise, is not going to come in to where we had anticipated or what we're usually used to, based on what's going on with just the motor vehicle industry right now. There's other areas that we're not reaching our targets based on what's happening in the economy.
Maybe we can talk more offline. I totally get that if other buckets are going down, the total amount may be going down a little bit. And I still don't understand why only 162 has been put in for the fire when we think we're bringing in 440. I know 100 goes to the stabilization, but that's still 340. So I don't understand exactly why we're putting in 162 when we think we're getting 340 into the revenue model. That would be the ambulance component. Other things may bring it down overall for the total. And I don't want to harp on it now, but I'm just not really getting.
If I could just say, it's based on a three-year rolling estimate, in addition to consideration of the total mile, three-year rolling estimate, which would be 278, less the, less the 100,000, so we're looking at 178, and the estimate is for 162.
Oh, I see, three-year rolling, that's what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that 44, Kevin, that would have to be the school talking directly to FinCom, not through us. They would have to let FinCom know if that's a real number?
So they've indicated that's the number that they've identified for further reduction if the school committee via a publicly posted meeting and a vote agrees that they can reduce their operating budget by that dollar amount. And so I've had conversations today and asked if it was possible for them to put a meeting on the books for the very early part of next week, if possible, so that we have clear understanding of what the, where we're landing the plan, I guess, or what the number is, if it is, if they will get there. It does require a vote still.
Kevin, do you have any feeling for what would be given up with that 44K?
I do. It's, there's been some, it's the people cost to be, I don't want to, I don't want to.
Like one less teacher, or one less aide.
It's not a reduction of headcount, it's based on a transition and what, with that transition, what potential savings.
It's complex. Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's see, for our town budget reductions, Kevin, could you share what's under there?
Yep, absolutely. So the Tier One, I've got three tiers under here. And the Tier One is $111,000 that we've already scraped out of the budget from a certain point. I'm using a certain date from a week and a half ago from Mike Hartman's on the FinCom, his model, because the model's moving every day, it's moving every meeting. I had to pick a time to start to be at sort of a fixed, a fixed number to work off of. And we've reduced 111 between base budget and over-asking. Some of that was real numbers based on the great work done by, and we've used their name a lot this budget cycle, Donna Rich with the IT regionalization and finding some efficiencies and some cost savings there, which is great. There's a number of different items built into that number, but those have been shared and built into the latest model by Mr. Hartman as well. But there's different things that that number represents that brings that number down. In addition to that, there's a Tier Two and a Tier Three, and I've sort of referenced that. You know, Tier Two and Tier Three are starting to get into what I would say is sort of the danger zone a little bit, only because it's, it's, it was a real, it's cutting it close, I guess, and there's potential that we might be right up against the budget number or find ourselves if certain things change. But at the same time, those numbers are good numbers. It also includes, in I think Tier Two, a reduction of the planner hours as proposed at 19 initially. And I'll share that in the next slide. You can, I actually already see the little bit of the bottom of it. But there's different things that that, the additional two tiers, which have not been brought back to FinCom as we've, because there's so many levers moving at the same time. And these are ones that are really deep, but we're willing to go there to try to get a balanced budget.
Kevin, I would just recommend that when you're meeting with them on Monday, that you take out from your analysis anything that's already been given to them. They're at 416,000 right now, so that's the number that they're working from. So we should be at the same point that they were as of Monday. That's where we left.
No, Madam Chair, absolutely. I've spoken, like I said, this number moves on an hour-by-hour basis. This is my sort of tracking sheet, but I'm up to speed with their model, and it's not going to be duplicated, because the number in the 115, like I said, I'm sorry, the 111 is already built into the model that's more updated. Those are just a representation that's already been, that's, those are cuts that we made in the last week. And then there's additional cuts that can come on top of that, which have not been expressed and which are not built into the model, which would be above the last bits, if we can get there. And some of it's contingent on different votes that still have to happen. And if something votes in a certain way, we might be able to reduce here to offset some. So there's different moving pieces with those as well.
The moving pieces that are left, to my understanding, is the three asks that we have, plus their determination of how. plus their determination of how much comes, uh it gets added from free cash. Wasn't everything voted on a- at the last meeting, is there anything left to take into consideration besides what the school would do, what you can come up with, and what's coming in for free cash?
So the the so it's the model adjustments, it's the budget from the school, and then it's any additional savings beyond what we've already done at tier one, which is the hundred and eleven. Some of the items within those additional cuts, um, you know, as an example, is salary reserve reduction under fire from another five thousand dollars. It's
Didn't you give back to them on Monday, though?
I'm sorry?
Didn't you give them that on Monday, wasn't that one of the things?
This is an additional, so we got, we we reduced fifteen based on the hiring of two new firefighters. If we don't get the two new firefighters, that fifteen needs to go back in plus another forty-five because of the coverage that will need to require us out of the call firefighters. So it's, 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 things fall because other things happen. Um, and that's sort of the example where that five thousand is a trigger that we could use potentially if we had the two firefighters brought on. Um, and you know, another one, another example is um um, let me see, I talked, I put in there, it's, you know, uh our reduction on the planner. Um, whether whether the planner is accepted by the FinCom or not, um, you know, we you know, reducing that number from the nineteen to say twelve would have a savings for the town and that's built into one of the tiers because that's based on the vote from the FinCom. So if you know, ma'am Chair, that's sort of the flavor of these, there's really multiple steps that drive these, they're tied to other things that we're doing.
And I would say bottom line, just um from a a conceptual point of view, so that the board's all on the same page. If we don't go with a planner, if if for some reason we say, let's not go with the planner, then the planning board and the zoning board will still be covered by whoever replaces Donna. Correct? They're not going to lose their support. If we go with a planner, then their support would be provided with the planner. But if we don't get a planner, that support is still provided by the person that replaces Donna Rich, is that correct?
So what what I would, I'll just, it's in the next slide, so I'll just go to the next slide.
Kevin, that's a yes, no answer.
So I believe in
The an- the answer is yes.
So I I it's not, I I think it is actually, with all due respect to everybody, I think if there's a little bit more because it's if you reduce, if you, a professional somebody goes
The answer is yes, we need to know how you're going to do it, but the answer is yes.
We can't be cutting anything that already exists for those two boards, so it's just a matter of which person does it, what seat or
I I I spoke with um the Chair Martha Morrison today of the planning board. Um, we had a very good conversation, she knows what the situation is right now with the budget. And I did promise her that no matter what happens, I'll ensure that those boards have cover um, at least at the level they're being covered now, um, and going into the future, so.
Very, yeah, very good, Kevin, that's why the answer is yes. They will be covered, no matter how we do it.
Yeah, if I have to take the minutes, I'll tell you, we'll figure it out, we'll get, we'll make sure they have the support. So um, you know, that goes to the first one here, so from the analysis wise, if the remaining over asking are approved by the FinCom, that's the two firefighters, digital communication coordinator, and reducing the planner down to twelve hours on a weekly basis. We have a, we have our number, and then it's if the if the hundred and forty-three eight seven seven is something which vetting it through this, the FinCom, you know, like I said, we've talked to, talked to our auditor, they're on board with it. If the FinCom understands in in agreement with it, um, that number goes into the into the into the model a- and in the favor of getting, helping us balance. The school committee then approves the forty-four thousand dollars uh in reductions that they've indicated. And that leaves us roughly twenty-five thousand dollars. And there's a few other ways to get there, you know, it depends on votes um from on Monday night specifically. Uh, the conversation we said about the planner, you know, reducing it down to twelve, but if there's, you know, in general terms, still, I don't want to speak for the FinCom, but if they decided that's not something they'll they'll support regardless of the hours, that would obviously have an impact as well. Um, so, you know, there's also a couple other mechanisms in there um that we could talk about, but these are ones that are, we're, you know, we're getting deep into, and we'll talk with the FinCom too, because um, you know, we'll see what their comfort level with is with with other levels. Like I mentioned, things that on the model that we're reduced to help us get balanced thus far, they've seemed to have a willingness to to get to those numbers. If the one forty-three eight seven seven happens and we're twenty-five off, I still think we're within a striking distance to be able to balance that budget one way or another.
Kevin, what if we're sixty-nine thousand off and the school committee does not approve the budget reduction? Can you still find that in those four bullets down there?
We really need the school to participate, um, it'd go a long way.
Yep.
Right, Kevin, any more slides on this um presentation?
Um, just the last thing I'll mention, you know, if if obviously we aren't, and this is a great segue, thank you, uh, Mr. Brown. If we're not able to get there one way or another, the other option, as you said, Madam Chair, is is the option for an override. Um, there is a very short window between now and when it would need to get posted um to be able to to have the question. Um, I've I've, you know, my personal feeling is, is that um with the potential of some new costs next year, um, a prime example, and we all, we know this, is the trash contract. Um, I'm going to unshare my screen so I can see everyone while I'm sharing this.
Kevin, before we start talking about what's coming next year, just when you mentioned about the the timeframe, if we do decide that we need to do an override for one or all three, whatever the decision is of those asks that we've got, what is that timeframe? Can we go to KP now to get the verbiage all set to go? What's the drop dead date?
Um, so we have to have everything tight by, I'd say, end of end of the night Monday to present to Tuesday for uh Beth, so she can do her part and have it then go, um.
Well, our last meeting is on the thirtieth. So Tuesday night doesn't work if we're meeting on the thirtieth. I thought we had until thirty-first, no?
So it's, I talked with Beth right before we got on, and that's, we we landed on Tuesday, I mean, if it I could talk with her to see, it was, we counted back to thirty-five days from the date that's required and it it it's Tuesdays getting us, you know, having her having him Tuesday gets that Wednesday to get it to where it needs to go, um, in essence. So it's 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 a short window, but, you know, I think the, I mean, if we if we have to, Monday night's going to probably be a we'll have a lot more clarity, hopefully, um, coming out of Monday night. And I can talk with Beth too, just to make sure that, you know, the dates are the dates and that if we need to do it. I think that, you know, right now in my mind, we're close, we've got some levers, we got a path that we can walk down. And I think on the on the the override question, you know, I talked about the short timelines, there's um, you know, I I I know that we have a contract that's going to, you know, people are talking about a hundred percent increase on the cost on the trash. I've done some back of the envelope, it's going to be significant, I hope it's not a hundred percent, and we'll do our best to negotiate that. But that might be at this point where we're at in how we operate. The tipping point next year that requires us to do something that we we might need to do. And I I just, I say it out loud because I, you know, I've seen it done successfully with overrides where it's talked about for a period of time prior to that override, the community hears what the reasons are. The the thoughtfulness and the planning for years out are built into that override so that we don't have to go back to the community the next year or the year after that or the year after that. Um, and I I don't know if we're in a position with some of the unknown costs, bigger costs that could come down in the next year to know this year what that might look like. Um, and I also, just for, you know, how we would do an override if we were there, one of the suggestions I would certainly make um to to the board would be to consider um, pull up the right there, keep it, you know, what what we would want to override. Um, you know, my, you know, there are certain things we have that are revenue generators. It's actually very rare that we have revenue revenue generators um from the town and um.
Kevin, I don't mean to interrupt, but we're we're not going to debate tonight which ones we we could potentially get into an override. We'll wait for Monday's meeting with FinCom for that. But if you're telling us that uh Donna needs to know whether or not we have an override question by Tuesday night, we can't be meeting on Wednesday, that's not going to work, we'd have to change the date when we're meeting in order to vote on this following the FinCom's vote. So that would mean moving our date back to the twenty-ninth to meet.
Yeah, I'll confirm tomorrow morning, it was, it was literally coming into the meeting and counted it back and then I jumped on. But it's, it's, we have a window that we have to have the question in by
I understand that, it's just we need to know that ASAP because we need to set our date, our meeting date so that we meet that date if we need to do an override.
Yeah.
We don't want to back ourselves into a corner and say we don't have any option. So the only option at that point, if we can't do an override and the FinCom cannot put it in their budget, then those three things just get dropped. And I don't think we want to do that, I think we want to have the discussion, so um we may not need it and and maybe this all works out on Monday, but I think if you can get that date from Donna, um, then we potentially change our meeting to the twenty-ninth.
Yeah.
That's right, if if the date, if the date is not going to work on on Wednesday, then we need to schedule one for Tuesday. Just arbitrarily schedule one for Tuesday, but I I I think that the the date of uh Wednesday should be all right because we need thirty-five days and the election is on the fifth. So I I think we're all right with that, but uh let's find out, absolutely.
Why, why don't?
Request, uh, uh, Kevin. On on the Monday night with the FinCom, you've made a number of specific, very clear descriptions of things that are different from the omnibus budget. Could I ask, and it hopefully is not much, to create a spreadsheet with those six items or whatever they are, which would include the line items, um, and and what's going on with them? Added, uh, moved, uh, I think it's just a matter of uh removed, changed from this to that. A very simple one though, but that has all of those, I think it'd be very helpful to everybody in the FinCom to have it in front of them. Not that it isn't in the model, but that we have it in front of us as a as a change. And then if there's any other ones that you're talking about changes, they could be added that and people can add and subtract from it.
Sure, we keep score, I I have a, I have a uh an Excel sheet that I'm actually working off of myself, so I can, it's an easy ask.
And it would only be those things that are different from the four sixteen number from two days ago. Because we want to be working off of their model, so whatever they've got in there, these are changes to that model so that we don't have competing models.
I I I think it's everything that's different from the omnibus budget item, not the over, not the over but but the the omnibus budget items that are different, and that's just a couple of line items. And again, you must have it, so that'd be great for for ever, get it out for everybody. Especially because this is a very late date to be doing this. If it was not such a late date, I thought we'd say, okay, we can move it around, and then we'll get another omnibus budget update and more. We're not in that, we're we're under crunch time for the next eight days here.
Absolutely, so I I, it's ten items, I'll send that over. Um, and do you want as well, Mr. Gant, the the levers that we're talking about as well? Or you just want the formal ones that were taken out of the omnibus uh on the model?
I don't want to ask any more than than that it takes you to, it takes you too much time. But if you have some material that that goes through that, I I would add that as a separate item if it doesn't take a lot of your time. The main thing though is to see the the items that uh are different from the omnibus budget now.
The omnibus, the omnibus budget as of Monday, because Mike Hartman was tweaking it as of Monday, so some of the things that Kevin suggested be decreased are already included in that model now.
They're not included in the omnibus, that's why it's helpful to have something that says, we know the omnibus, we've got that, everybody's got that. And these are the things that's that are different, in case there's some questions about what's what's different about the budget and how did it happen? It's not a big deal, it's it's, there's only like six items in there, I believe, but I don't remember how you went through, but order of magnitude, it's 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 a half an item, it's not twenty or thirty.
Kevin, also, if we, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just saying, ten items, and that, I can send that over.
Okay, um, and then because we are in such tight timeframes, do we need KP to draft some language if we need to go to an override so that we can vote on that override when we meet on the twenty-ninth? So that Beth can actually publish the question?
If you'd like me to ask that, I certainly can.
That's true, uh, Lynn, but it is pretty much boilerplate, the the issue that that is in there is what's, what are the things and what are the dollars? But but it's boilerplate
We don't have any words in front of us, so if we're if we're going to vote on something, we'd probably get in front of us. Okay.
We're going to schedule a Tuesday meeting now?
Kevin, is Beth still there? No, it's ten to six, she's probably gone.
Find out if 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 Wednesday is okay, if it's not, then schedule the Tuesday meeting.
And we can just do that via um email?
Yep, not a problem, um, just one other thing just
Is there anyone who has a conflict and could not do a Tuesday at this point?
I would ask that we do it as early as we can on Tuesday.
Um, how early do you need it, Cam?
I I I have an engagement that evening I'm looking at, and I don't know that I can move it. Uh, I can try, but if we could do four, four-thirty even, that would give me time to do both.
Okay, when when is your drop dead, um, Cam, when when would you have to be out of meeting?
That I can be a little loosey with, I mean, I could six fifteen, six thirty, something like that.
Okay.
Of course, I'm concerned you can have it as early as you want.
Yeah, I could go earlier too, I mean, I I I could go earlier.
Okay, that's good to know, Marshall, any constraints in your end, where's Marshall?
He's
I don't see him, he must have dropped off.
Yep, we may have lost him.
He's probably walking into the house, so, okay, we'll double check with him. Kevin, you were saying something else?
No, the only last thing is we're talking about budget, I just want to make sure too, because the last bits of this is is we're talking um um, you know, people and staffing and in the numbers. I did do analysis um uh from a uh December of nineteen and a snapshot in what we are now from a headcount. Um, FTs and um PTs, and we're at one more additional, I'm sorry, one less um employee employee in total between PTs and FTs um, from a, before I was here to where we are now, so um you know, I just want to make sure that 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 that's allowed, because I know that's a conversation we've had in 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 this budget and the last bits are people-related, and I want to just give a sense for what we've been doing and how we've been managing and where we are from uh from the number side.
Okay, thank you. Um, could we jump over to just discuss the police cruiser? Because there has been some dialogue about that and it it did not pass unanimously. Um, primarily because of the information component and that there's still a lot that's, you know, up in the air about um, that actual purchase. So I know that um FinCom mentioned on Monday that Chief had provided them with like three areas that he's looking and will do an analysis on before deciding the type of car. Part of it was the infrastructure required in order to power the cars, uh what other communities are doing, the actual results that, I think we got the car in October, is that correct? So it would be in October to October look, is that
August.
August, we got it in August.
We're saying August.
Okay, so it'd be in August to August look and then the analysis. So the question came up, um, two questions, one is the trade-in, um, and is there a trade-in? And secondly, do we absolutely need to purchase this car this year? If we're doing the analysis in August, it may be that the purchase actually takes place, you know, uh, November, December, so we're going to have it for six months. Do we need to buy it this year um and use it for six months? Or is it worth waiting to get some more information relative to infrastructure and performance and the new technology, et cetera? So um I think it, if if I could just turn that over to Chief Hovey to give us his sense on that.
Could could I just clarify that, because I said the dates and and the chief will confirm this too, though, that we did get it in August, but from the point of view of of evaluating it, it really didn't go on the road for purposes of police work until October first, and Chief can confirm that, but but that's the
That's what I thought, so the analysis will go October to October.
But the chief can confirm that, but I just want to clarify since I said the other date, thank you.
Yeah, great, Chief?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So uh, I want to be as brief as possible, I know uh with the time constraints and stuff, but the the issue is the is the aging fleet that we have, the number of uh wear, the amount of uh wear and tear in the vehicles. And I'm really concerned about our maintenance of of the vehicles. We have six cruisers, we have four of them that have over a hundred thousand miles. We have one cruiser that is a hundred and thirty thousand, another one with a hundred and twenty-one thousand, another one with a hundred and fourteen thousand, and another one Another one with 121,000, another one with 114,000 and another one with 108. Now that is actual odometer readings of those vehicles. But if you go and you estimate the idling time, the engine hours and the odometer readings, we're looking at the wear and tear of cruiser number 10 is about 424,000 miles of wear and tear. Cruiser 11 is 392,000 miles of wear and tear. Cruiser 12, 225, cruiser 14, 303 and cruiser 15, 130. So though that's five out of the six vehicles that have wear and tear greater than 130,000 miles. So when you look at what is going on, none of them are under warranty any longer. The, so we're looking at major expenses of water pumps that are going to cost us 2,500 to 3,000. We can't do them internally. We have to send them to Stonem Ford. We potentially could be looking at transmissions, replacing engines, catalytic converters and other things, you know, the, the stretch ball joints, normal wear and tear of the vehicle. So I am worried about the wear and tear of the vehicles, the, the amount of miles that are on the vehicle and what our maintenance is going to be going forward. So that's my sort of concern. We also talked to Ford and they're talking about a shutdown in two to three months. If they do a shutdown and the production stops, we're going to be probably looking about 45 to 50 weeks before we can get a, a vehicle. And so that, that is going to be a challenge. We did talk to the McGovern Ford that we deal with. And they do have, they only have 240 gas combustible en, engine cruisers in stock. They do have some EV cars in stock. And so again, we're still doing our analysis and they have some hybrids as well. But I'm not really looking at them because I've heard horror stories. Went and bought one, they sent it back. They're switching to Dodge vehicles. Hamilton bought one a year ago. It only has 5,000 miles. It's been backed to Ford numerous times. So in a hybrid vehicle, they only put 5,000 miles over a year because it was 90% of the time was in the, in the shop. So those are some of the concerns that I have going forward. I know we want to do, do an analysis of this vehicle. We bought the vehicle on July 27th. That's the day we picked it up. You, you voted on the vehicle on the 26th. It was waiting for us. So we went and picked it up on the 27th. We actually, when you really want to look at it when we, as a frontline vehicle, we, we really did not put the vehicle into service until the second week of February. Because of the fact that as I've indicated before, we could not get a computer for the vehicle. And so a lot of the reasons it was not be utilized as a frontline vehicle because of the, of the mobile data terminal and the, the ability, because most of the cops are all, you know, driven by technology. So they want the access to seizures, to driver's licenses, the information about the, the suspects that we're dealing with. So it, it's really hard to do an analysis of sitting there looking at that. We picked it up on July 27th. Now it did go into a service after the Topsfield Fair. So the, about after the 11th of October, we started using it more frequently. And now it's fully functional, has a computer and all the other equipment as a primary vehicle that we are utilizing the vehicle and it's being used every single day of the week currently. The, the charging, we, we're averaging about 40 miles per shift. About 20% of the battery. We know there's some issues with the cold weather. We know we're losing about 50% of the battery. As soon as we break the plane of the garage, we keep the vehicle housed inside. We charge it up. As soon as we break it, because of the technology of the battery, we do lose about 50%. Not a major concern in Topsfield, only driving 40 miles. It's rated for 220 miles. If it goes down to 110 miles, we still can get three, about two, two shifts out of it before we're going to charge it up. We have worked out the technology and the fobs with the charging station downtown. We've brought it down there a couple of times and we're using the fob so we can do a higher speed of charging. So it takes about eight to 10 hours to charge it down there from again, from zero to 100, rather than on the 110 charger in the station. But again, when we look at it, if we're going for 20, 20% of the battery, we charge it up in eight hours, it's, it's back up to 100%. If we go 40, 40% down, still in another eight hour period of time, we're, we're picking up, you know, 25% of the, of the charge. So again, we could still use it for two or three more shifts. So it is fully functional. We have all the equipment in it. More and more officers are utilizing it now. But again, it's so hard to, to provide a real educated position on what vehicle we should buy next. My concern is that we really need a vehicle in this year. We've seen historically when we did not buy one in 2019, that this is now, this has become more of a challenge because the vehicles are getting older and more and more wear and tear and more and more mileage. And if we skip this year, that means we skip 2019, we'll be skipping 2022. We also skipped 2013. I believe we skipped 2016 because we bought two, two vehicles in 2017. So we do have some challenges when we skip a year. We'd like to be on a replacement and get one vehicle a year. We did look into the trade value of the vehicle. We have one vehicle that is a 2015. They quoted us to give us about $3,000 for that on a trade. And our 2017 vehicle that does have the highest amount of mileage, 130,000, they would give us 5,000 for that one because it's two years newer. So we're looking at between $3,000 and $5,000 for a trade on one of our existing vehicles. I've, I've been pretty clear. I do not need any more than these six vehicles. I will trade in a vehicle. Which, which vehicle? I'm not really sure. I'm not sure I should always trade in the oldest if it has the least amount of miles or if I should trade in something that has the highest amount of miles and we use it more frequently. So any questions that anybody has, I'm more than happy to provide any information that I do have. But I, I think it's not correct to sit there and say that we have some data analysis that are true and accurate dating back to July. We're probably in the infancy of data collection because we're using the shift, the vehicle, one to two shifts per day, every single day of the week at this time.
If, if we just really have put it into use in February, as you say, of this year, it's going to take an entire year then to assess through all the seasons, how it's performing, what the battery usage is, you know, if there are any difficulties. So are you saying, since you need a car right away? And we wouldn't actually be buying one if we waited for that year analysis until next town meeting anyway. So are you suggesting we go with a gas car then? And wait the year, do the analysis and determine at that point if the car after that should be gas or EV?
I, I think, Madam Chair, I think it's a challenging question. I, I think that this vehicle suits the needs of, of the town of Topsfield. I think it performs extremely well. It has a higher crash rating. It's pursuit rated. It's, I'm concerned about our gas prices have gone up 24%. I mean, we used to be paying 233 and then it went to 260. Now we're paying 323 a gallon. So that cost is going up. Our electric bill is about 21 cents per kilowatt. I looked for December and January, my latest bills, you know? So the, when you look at some cost analysis of what it's costing us to, to run an EV car as compared to a gas combustible engine, we're going to save money in the long term by the differences. So I, I, I'm, I'm very uncomfortable sitting there saying that, uh, let's go with an EV because I don't have all the data. I think it's the right vehicle. I honestly did this for the community. This was not something that Neo Hobby created. This was, we did a lot of due diligence. We thought it was a great vehicle for the town of Topsfield. It fit everything that we need as a police department. I know people differ. We can agree to disagree and that, that's fine. It'd be simple to tell you tonight, yeah, let's buy a gas combustible engine. Let's pay, you know, three, four dollars, five dollars a gallon of gas and it's easy and I, I could get one tomorrow. But I'm not sure that's the right decision to make.
Right. And my, my concern is that we, we said that this was going to be a pilot and that we were going to do an evaluation of it and it's only been on the road for two months. So we're, I don't know, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think we all were saying we need that kind of experience and that actual facts to make a decision. And if you need the car right away, we'd be waiting a year for this analysis. I'm not sure that takes care of your problem.
I, I don't disagree with you, Madam Chair. I know the town administrator has his hand up, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, just for the timing in the, in the war article. So the ability to have the war article, because the article obviously says that we're, we're weighing data. If we decide if a vehicle engine blows up in the next year, we'll have that, that war article, which lives in perpetuity. So if we find ourselves, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong as I say this, but if we find ourselves in a, in a need to purchase right away, we will look at the data we have at that time. If it's not conclusive, there's a very good chance that there's a need that we'll go with the combustion engine at that time, right? If it, if we can, if we have it in our quiver now to be able to move forward when we have the data and the vehicle's needed, then I think we'll be in a better position than waiting a year and a half to have the ability to purchase the vehicle. And also the free cash being available right now. And having the free cash with the, we do our capital model. We base that on the, the guidelines of 300,000 on free cash. If we find ourselves having to double up, like Chief mentioned, there was a year skipped and there was two vehicles purchased in a subsequent year. And I know talking with our superintendent Wilds this afternoon, there's on the capital plan next year, a, a good item on one of the dump trucks. So you know, from the five-year capital improvement plan, unless there's flexibility with the FinCom in their guidelines with how much free cash, we reduce it this year. Do we push it to next year to double up? Would only be, I guess, a question that I would have just so we don't, if we, if we do decide that the EVs are something that's good, okay, if we don't, then we can move with that. But we wouldn't be falling behind like we did as Chief referenced in 19 when we, we, we were playing some catch up. And now we have the four vehicles over 100,000.
Were you going to say something?
Yes, I, 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 questions for Chief and general comments really. I, I've really always been in favor of the, the potential of electric vehicle. But I don't think we're ready to do that yet. And I think the chief has indicated we've only got a couple of months under it. I think it's going to be a, I think it's going to be a serious process of trying to sell the public on another EV at this point in time. What I'd like to make a comment about is that we've got four vehicles that are over 100 grand, 100,000 miles. And the usage factor puts them up into the three or 400,000 mile range that you were talking about earlier. If we do nothing, in my opinion, all four of those vehicles aren't going to die at once. If we're, if we're fortunate, maybe only one will die. And if one dies, we'll go out and buy it, buy whatever we need at that point in time. But, but I think we've wasted too much time talking about EVs at this point in time. And I'm of the opinion that we might ought to do-
I don't know. I'm mostly bringing it because I like having the pockets.
Marshall, you're, we can hear you.
He's up.
Buying coffee, I think.
Sorry.
I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that we might ought to do nothing and, and gamble a bit on the usage of the four cars. Chief, I don't believe it's a safety issue. Do you? Absolutely not. It's just, uh,
It's maintenance.
It's mains. I may be coming back here for a reserve cash transfer because I, I can't afford, I, I need money to pay for the mains. But it is not a safety issue. The cars are really safe. We maintain them extremely well. It really helps with having a mechanic internally. So yes, it is not a safety issue at all. Appreciate that. I, I, I don't think it's much of a gamble to, to, to use them as long as we can and do nothing this year. And then of course we're delaying the inevitable because now you, now you're going to come back to us next year and want two of them. Maybe, maybe not. I won't commit to that one either.
I know you're on mute and I know you probably have no one in a few minutes. Oh, sorry. I've got to get a new computer. Marshall, can you hear us? I know you're on mute, but I know you have to go. Do you have any-
Yes, I can. I can hear you and I'm here now walking the streets of Boston. So you may or may not be able to hear me very well. Here's, here's what I'll say in summary on this question. I am fully in favor of the idea of an EV. I am, I am mostly convinced. But I am also acknowledging that there seem to be a large contingent of the people in our town who are not. And I feel like the, the best way for us to proceed is not to, and I'm going to use this phrase which is strong, but you know, force it down anyone's throats, right? If, if people don't trust it yet, then the way I think we're going to build that trust is not to go out and buy another one that quickly or even contemplate it, but rather get even more data. And so if there isn't a safety concern in a rush to get one now, I don't want to sink the money into another gas vehicle if we don't think that's the best way to go either. So assuming we can do it, I would, I'd be in favor of waiting just because I believe that we can make a much better case for this in a year than maybe we can make it now.
Thank you, Marshall. Cam, any thoughts?
Marshall basically took the words out of my mouth. I believe we are the town data and analytics. I know that, I know that it wasn't a frontline vehicle, Chief Hovey, but I, but in October, we started gathering some data which will help us understand battery consumption during winter and so on. So we'll have, we'll have actionable information, but to Marshall's point, and I do agree with it, you know, we're, we're not going to have the full scope. And, you know, there are, there are people who are questioning the decision. I'm 100% sold based on the homework that Kevin and Chief Hovey did back this summer. I trust that they did their homework and, and I believed in it and I still do. But I, I don't think we should forge ahead until we have all the information. I, I just don't think that's responsible. With an electric vehicle, sorry.
I agree.
Dick, any comments?
Yeah, I agree on not moving forward without the information. But just a quick one though, for the chief, for planning purposes in your budget. Remember when you use that fob downtown, that's 30 cents a kilowatt. It's a small thing, but just be aware of that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Gant.
Um, do we want to move forward then with removing that article from the warrant?
I'm, I'm sorry. What'd you say?
Do, do you want to move forward at this point from removing that article from the warrant?
Meaning moving forward with what Boyd Jackson described as a bit of a gamble. We may have to dip in to take care of some maintenance costs, but it seems like the appropriate response at this point. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So we would actually remove that article from the warrant to purchase a new police cruiser.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, what's that article number? I don't have it in front of me.
14.
Item 14. Recommend, make a motion that we remove article 14 from the warrant at this point in time.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Dick, did you have comments? Cause we can discuss it at this point.
I, I thought everybody faced, I, I don't, we, nope, nope.
I think everyone's on the same page.
That was an awfully, that was an awfully slow second though.
I was waiting for somebody else since I've been involved with this for a long time, saying that that was the case, that would give somebody else a chance to do it. I'm sorry.
Doesn't look like we have Marshall on any longer. He must have had to drop off. All right. Well, we'll move to roll call. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Ramirez is aye, so it passes unanimously.
I'll make a wager.
Unanimous for those that are here. Okay. We've lost Marshall for the rest of today?
Uh, well, he had to leave at 6. He hung on for a few more minutes, but I think he's gone.
Yeah, he's gone. Okay. So you're not-
I'll make a wager. I'll bet you we get through the next year with the four vehicles we've got. And I'll bet you at the end of our next term, we'll buy an electric vehicle and I'll bet anybody a dollar on that.
You may very well be right.
I like, I like all of that, Boyd. I'm, I'm not going to bet against that.
Okay. Um, just one last thing on the, the warrant. Article 25, Kevin, wording.
Up front, up front.
Lynn?
Article 25, the wording that we talked about, I have to look out of the side of my eyes now to see it. They weren't incorporated into the latest version. So I'll just send it over to you again. It, it's minor wording. It doesn't change the, the intent of it. But I can see that it, it wasn't changed. So I'll-
Which article is it? Sorry?
25, 25.
I think the issue was with tree planting, wasn't it?
It was tree removal. So the word angle here to see. So the change was, if you look at that italicized, there are a number of hazardous trees located on town properties and right-of-ways.
Yep.
Period.
Thank you.
This article would allow the town to address this backlog of hazardous trees, which are typically dead or diseased, period.
So it's in public right-of-ways.
In that first sentence.
That the only?
Nope. And then the next sentence, this article would allow the town to address this backlog of hazardous trees, which are typically dead or diseased, period. So you can take out on town properties and public right-of-ways because we already said it in the first sentence. Okay. I think that's everything for the ATM. We'll attend the FinCom meetings. We'll see what Beth says for a date. We may have to change our meeting to the 29th. And then we'll make some final decisions based upon what is actually included in the base budget and if there needs to be an override or if we're going to withdraw any requests that we put in. Anything else on the ATM? Anyone can think of?
Was everyone comfortable with the last 7.01 besides that one change from Chief Ramirez? I just want to make sure that the language modifications were accepted. Good?
Yeah, I think it looked good, Kevin.
Okay. And just to reiterate, the yellow is still highlighted in Article 5, obviously. And I will go back for language. There's some stock language we actually looked at today from a previous override to have something in the, ready to go if and when needed. And I'll distribute that out, maybe as a separate document when the next version gets circulated for review.
All right. So the STM, under the master plan. Any comments or questions from people on the changes that Kevin put in?
So there is one thing that had, in the warrant itself and in the motion also, it does say to be expended by the select board. I took that out. I did not put the word planning board in there because I didn't want to create any additional discussions. But if it's anything, then it should be by the planning board, both again in the warrant and in the motion. But also in the motion, right after that phrase, the word "help" was not removed. "To help." We took it out of the warrant but didn't take it out of the motion.
Okay. I think "help" was in there because it was implying this is another piece added to the 100,000?
It might be, but it's very difficult. It doesn't make a difference to the motion. It's a consultant to do the work. If we want to describe anything more about it, that would be, but it's not part of a motion to put in "help." I think we took it out because it came out of the warrant part, but not out of the motion. But it's almost a funny thing to put in front of the.
Mr. Gant, clarifying question, just, so I know, should we put similar to the, because the money's going to be expended out of the operating, I'm sorry, out of the warrant article and the grant that the town signed off on and the money's in the town account, that authorization that expend that will go through the board for the contract that we sign? Do we want to put with the advice of, like we do with the police cruiser, of the planning board, rather than that the planning board will expend it? Because I don't think the planning board has the technical authority to do so.
That would be fine.
It sounds right to me.
Yes, if I might add.
I'll leave it in there if you think it's important, but I think it's unnecessary and kind of.
You know, that's fine. It does describe it in the italicized area. Martha, did you have a comment?
Oh, just that the planning board does not have the authority to sign a contract or to expend funds, that that is something up to the Board of Selectmen with the advice of the planning board, if we can possibly include that somewhere in this. I'm sure we're all on the same page with this. But as I say, we don't have the authority to sign, as far as I know, to sign contracts or to engage people. It's your job to do that.
Yeah.
That is, that is true.
What we try to do is take it out altogether so it didn't create any discussions. But if we put it in there, select board, then we need to put in, I believe, with the advice of the planning board.
Yes, I think that would be an appropriate thing to do.
Okay. That's fine.
I have no problem with that. Motion to make those amendments, to remove the "help" and add in with the advice of the planning board in the warrant and therefore in the motion.
For Article 4 in the STM?
Article.
Article 4.
Right.
Fourth.
Fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. This is the STM 4. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? This is a really nice concise write-up. I like the way it looks. Okay, move to roll call. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Ms. Ramirez's eye, so it passes. Thank you. I think that was it for the STM, right, Kevin?
Except you do know that you'd have to work on the page numbering as we see it. Now, maybe you're not having that problem, but as we see it, there are page numbering problems.
I see one of three, two of three, and three of three.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Minus two of two. Okay. Thank you. One suggestion I would make. I can work with you, Kevin. You can fix that table so that it moves the town of Topsfield Board of Selectmen down automatically. Just say, keep with next. Go into paragraph, left the table, go into paragraph and say, keep with next, and then it'll drop it down to the next page. So the whole table is together.
You'd like, you want, so.
It's up to you. It doesn't make a difference. It just makes the formatting easier when you go through it the next time, the next time, the next time.
Do you understand what Dick's asking, Kevin?
I think it's, we're looking to put the signature on the third page of the select board. Is that the ultimate?
Board of Selectmen, that line at the bottom of Page 2 right now, we go down to Page 3.
Got it.
Okay. All right. I think that was everything then for ATM and STM. All right. Then we'll go back up and go to the Public Health Excellence Grant. Kevin, I don't know if you want to introduce this before we have Wendy Hansberry, our Health Director, speak to it.
So this is a continuation. We came to you folks to the board a couple of months ago, rough, I think it was January, with a contract that is for contracted public health nurse, which we executed. And Julia is now working on behalf of the three communities. One of the other, this is 100% funded through the Excellence Grant that we received with the great work of, through Wendy Hansberry. And this inspector is the second part of that. And it's the next position to help us with our inspectional inspections for the Health Department between the tri-town. I've spoken with the three, or two other town administrators, Boxford and Middleton, and they are comfortable with the language and they're comfortable with the contract as presented. I know that, I believe that we did get the contract signed by the, by the first, yes, Wendy's shaking her head, yes. So as long as there isn't anything in the contract, there's a replication in sense. In most ways, it's templated off of the already approved contract by the select board for the public health nurse. So Wendy, I'll hand it over to you if you have anything else you want to add or anything I might have missed.
No, you covered it very well. I just want to mention that Mark Corleao has worked both with Middleton and with Topsfield for, as a, as part of our fair, Topsfield Fair this past year. So the person is known to us. He has an impressive resume. And the contract, as Kevin mentioned, is for all intents, identical to the one previously approved in January for Julia. And again, thank you for that because Julia has transitioned over from our pandemic nurse to our tri-town public health nurse very well. So we're grateful to have that and we're looking forward to having our inspectional services taken care of. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, there's one place I know, we take it from the existing contract, but you, there is a reference to her in Item 13. Should change it to him or his/her rather, to his. It needs to be changed or you can just leave it. Change it to his/her to keep it a general one. It's up to you. But yes, we had a female before and this is a male. So that should change.
So that, I can definitely make that grammatical change and send it over to Mark for his issuing, if you'd like. He has signed a contract. He did not have a problem with that. And I'm sure he wouldn't have a problem.
I can't imagine.
I can't either.
Wendy, Mark is for a full-time position, and is to just do consulting. Is that the switch?
It's consulting 30 hours a week.
Will he still be working with Middleton? It looks like he's doing consulting for Middleton separately before this position.
So I'm not privy to how they are working out whether or not, because Middleton's position is separate from the work he will be doing as the tri-town inspection, environmental inspector. So that wasn't something I really dug into with Derek. My understanding is that position, that money is still there. And this is to cover things that weren't covered by that job.
Okay, great. So the two votes that we have before us are both for the same contract, right? The same document. One is to accept the wording changes, the verbiage changes. And then the second one is to accept the signed contract with Mark, correct?
Could probably just accept the signed contract with Mark and that's sort of inclusive. But we wanted to be able to send you the option because you hadn't actually seen the contract with his name in it yet.
Great. I just wanted to make sure. I was looking for different documents and then I realized they were the same, one and the same.
Right. We're trying to make this a little streamlined, but we also wanted to anticipate whichever way the board pleased to go, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Wendy?
So, not a big deal. In 14, Section 14, if you're going to make changes to it, you're going to ask them about typo changes. It refers to Paragraph 14. I think that should be Section 14. And again, that may have been in the previous contract that I missed when we signed it up for the health. The health agent? No, it wasn't the health agent, the health.
Health nurse.
Yeah, right on. So anyway, if you could just maybe change that, if you're going to make the changes to him and her. But then, in the case of requests for qualifications, that's what went out. I assume for the request, if we're going to go through that again, I'm going to use that particular document again. I would ask you to just look at the sentence above minimum requirements and you want to remove one of those, "a health." Somebody did some editing in there and it doesn't read right. You have to remove two words, "a health." But that's for the next time you use that boilerplate.
Okay, thank you. All right. Can I get a motion, please, for the first vote?
Vote to approve an agreement between the town of Topsfield in conjunction with Boxford and Middleton and Mark Corleao as the Essex County Tri-Town Public Health Initiative's shared public health inspector for a term beginning upon approval of agreement through June 30, 2023, and authorize the town administrator to sign.
Thank you.
And I would just say, with the edits, as mentioned. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion?
So the only thing is, in that agreement, at the end, there's a place where it says who can make changes and modifications to it. Catherine, I'm not familiar with that. I should be aware of this, what it goes on here. But the important thing, especially if we're having, asking the town administrator to sign it, is to not also pass over the authority to make amendments to it at the very bottom. If I could just get a technical answer on how that all works.
Who are you asking, Dick? Who are you asking, Catherine, did you say?
You see it at the bottom of the whole doc, of the contract document?
Pull it up.
It's just above Catherine's signature there. It says, therefore, and that blank has the authority to execute a contract and approve requisitions. And I think that represents the select board and that the select board has. Because if this contract needs to be extended or something like that, you certainly want to, as a select board, want to know about it. Catherine, do you have any comment on that?
Sorry, I don't have that contract right in front of me, but that would have gone through procurement. And if there were any changes, it would just, the process would just start over with it.
Yeah, the way it is now, it's blank. So if there were any changes, it would go through the Board of Selectmen, right?
Yes.
So that, so we should put in there and that the select board has authority, has been authorized to execute, yeah. So that one amendment to it.
It would be implied, Dick, as far as, when I'm signing that contract, I consider that implied.
Yeah. It's just that it's blank in the agreement here. Yeah. Okay. All right.
Okay. So it doesn't look like we need the second motion then?
Right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate it. It looks like we have a good inspector.
Oh, you voted to approve? Thank you.
Oh, wait, did we?
Do you want to take the vote now?
Oh, my gosh. Good catch.
Wendy, we need you to stay around on this call.
All right. Roll call. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Ms. Ramirez's eye. So now it passes. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. I think.
It's getting late. It's getting late in the day.
Well, I had to unplug my computer and plug it back in because this second screen wasn't working and I threw myself off here, so.
Hopefully you all get to have dinner soon.
Thank you. Okay. So the next one is the Verizon contract renewal. Can I turn this to you, Kevin? I know that Mr. Whiting was on. There he is. Welcome, Bill.
The good news is at 4 o'clock, we received a copy of the contract. Kevin was correct in his crystal ball. We received approval of both the 3.5% of the gross revenue and the $18,000 a year. Bill, Hovey is, Hewick is still to review and advise us. I don't see any concerns and I'd say we're probably pretty close to signature.
Excellent. Great news.
That is good news.
In essence, what you're saying is, we're happy with what they came back with and they gave us a full contract that we could sign.
Yes, and we, the committee has already reviewed, you know, the proofing of the contract originally. And they just changed the very specific amount. So I think we're in good shape.
Great. Okay. So we're going to expect to do that the next regular meeting? Is that what we're doing?
I'm assuming Mr., the lawyer will come back and say, don't worry about anything. He hasn't done that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Gant, we'll put it on the next regular meeting for a formal vote of the board. If there's, I just put onto Board Docs or I've sent it over because we did receive it so late. It will be up on Board Docs, the version that was sent over for the board's review. Please provide any modifications to Bill and I. When's our next meeting? Maybe by the, I know we're busy with the budget and so maybe by the end of next week at the latest. And then we can, I don't know, Bill, if you have a better, Mr. White, if you have a better opinion on, because if there is any modifications, we'll have to go back to Verizon with it to get their approval because this is a contract that they've approved. Maybe if it's possible to send over by the end of, maybe by Monday of next week. That way we have enough time to get it over to them and back. Um, that way we have enough time to get it over to them and back before our next meeting the following Monday.
I don't think there'll be any, but we certainly can take any comments.
The only comments you expect are something from KP, correct?
Yes, but they have been through this and this is one that they have used many, many times. So they have said it's all set. If it isn't, then we have some problems. I don't expect any problems.
Nice going.
So probably then on, on April 4th, is that one would be signing or approving? In our next Monday meeting?
Yeah, we'll have that on the agenda.
Yeah.
And if, and if this, like I said.
At that point, the warrants are baked and everything else.
That sounds nice. Okay. Thank you so much, Bill, for all your help with this.
Okay. Good work, Bill. Good work.
Hey, thank you. I'm pleased in the meeting.
All right, good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, the next item is the new multifamily zoning requirements, uh, the response letter that I think if we feel comfortable with it tonight, we can vote on it. And then Martha Morrison is holding her meeting tomorrow night, uh, if she was able. Martha, were you able to get a quorum?
Um, I, I believe that we have a quorum. Um, I've gotten responses from at least three of the five. One can't come, uh, but we'll have at least a quorum.
Okay, excellent.
From what I can tell, you know.
So I, did everyone have a chance to look at the, the letter? It's on board.
I read it.
Yes.
It's a great letter. Thank you, everyone who gave input into this. I know it was a, a group effort. So the, the only thing that I had a question on was the, um, the traffic, uh, projections, actually. Let me just pull it up. So. Sorry again, dealing with screen issues here. So the, um, traffic projections, the cover letter, one small typo, there's just a space that's needed. Um, where it says as normal traffic. Um, there's a, a space needed after the word as.
Right. That may have been caught. Uh, we've had numerous eyes on this, but we can, we'll check it. Um, as far as the traffic issues, Holger Luther, uh, did a rather extensive analysis of the major roads. That is Route 1 and Route 97. Uh, and I don't know whether you have the attachment. I mean, I've been sending it out. Uh, Dick put a cover sheet on that, uh, document and Holger used traffic, you know, data, uh, well documented uh, to show what the increase would be at, you know, various points and various times in the day. Um, so it's just another one of the impacts of this kind of growth i- if it ever were to happen in the town of Topsfield. And I know Dick has worked with Holger on this. Uh, maybe Dick, you'd like to say something about the traffic analysis?
Yeah, first, it is on board docs, uh, in, in the public section. Um, and yes, uh, Holger did some outstanding work. We went to the police chief. He got the data from the police chief from recent counts on Route 1 and 97. Uh, in the case of 97, two different places, he was picking it up, one near Valley Road and the other one, uh, on the northern end, uh, Havel Road. And then he worked, he put the date, that data and then overlaid, as Martha said, uh, data from standard thumb, uh, rules of thumb that go on with traffic and such, uh, very creative thinking. So it's, I think it's very helpful and it includes a preamble before the graphs, which dramatically show what he estimates as being the effect of, uh, on, on the traffic on the roads.
This is terrific.
And we, we have all looked at it and I will tell you that, uh, the planning board members, um, have almost all weighed in on this document and are all very much in favor of it, uh, approve it and believe that it is, you know, uh, uh, an appropriate statement about the impact of this kind of development in town. Uh, so, uh, I was very thankful to all of the thoughtful people. And just so everyone knows, Dick knows, you know, I had like six different versions, you know, of this thing up on my computer, you know, trying to integrate, you know, all of the, the different comments. And, um, I, I do think that, um, I think that we've achieved, um, you know, the sentiment, uh, certainly of all who have commented. So a lot of people have been involved.
And I'm not sure, Dick or Martha, um, I couldn't tell the difference between, um, slide three and slide four. And I looked for everything. I'm like, okay, they're both Boston Street. They're both the same times. It's a 24-hour period. They're the same days, but the graphs are different. Um, so I didn't know what was the difference between them.
Give me a shit.
And then the same thing, I think it is for, let's see if it's five and six, Havel, Havel. Same time frames.
Just remind me now, which, which, uh, slides of the, maybe of the graphs, which two are we looking at?
Three and four.
Of the graphs.
Boston Street.
Havel Road, gotcha. Okay.
Um, Boston Street is three and four.
Okay, so the, the difference there is that the, the first of the two is for a subdivision, which was defined up in the description there as single-family dwellings, two-car garage. And the next one down is Congo and condo. And you see that referenced in the legend under the graph where there's, uh, normal traffic is blue. And then in one of them, it's, um, general law 43A subdivision and the other one is condo.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I could not see.
I understand that, that's a potential problem that it's easy for people to necessarily see the difference, but that's the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dick. That, that is in fact the case. I just pulled it up. Um, and the rest of it is all, uh, as I say, input from very, you know, a number of different people, um, integrating, uh, concerns about the environment, concerns about, you know, density. Um, uh, so I, I believe that this does capture all of our concerns, you know, about all of this. And it will go off to the state and they may or may not read it. Uh, they may or not pay any attention to it, um, which has been our experience in the past. Uh, but at least we are, um, you know, stating what the impact of this is on a town like Topsfield. Um, it is worth noting that the legislation itself, um, it is a bit problematic because it does designate certain things as required and that I don't know right, that regulations can, you know, can deal with that. Uh, and other things are rather amorphous and that the regulators have, you know, taken advantage of that uh, to create this 50-acre so-called reasonable-sized district. Um, so again, we're making recommendations, uh, that they may or may not be able to do, um, depending on, um, you know, how they interpret the law. Uh, there's also, uh, the issue, uh, that we've included, uh, that there, uh, there's this sort of comment about a 50-acre, uh, you know, 15 units per acre, but then they throw in a caveat about Title V and wetlands and whatever. And it is not at all clear as to how that caveat really relates to the density issues. And so we've raised that issue, uh, in the recommendations, you know, there's some, need some clarification as to, does this mean that, you know, if your entire town, you know, can't actually manage that kind of density? Is there some, you know, because of septic issues or because of wetlands or because of whatever? Uh, what are they going to do about it, basically?
Martha, to your, uh, first of all, you and Lynn did a terrific job on this. It is compelling. It is, it is great language. Um, I hope they don't.
It was not me.
Okay, Martha, good job.
Well, I, as I say, there's been a tremendous, just so everyone knows, Dick and I, Dick and I have worked on documents like this for, what is it, 15 years, Dick? 20 years?
Well, you got it down.
Yeah.
You got it, you got it down.
You know, we've done that, but we have a lot of other voices coming in, uh, who are new, uh, in, on the planning board. And I was very grateful for their input because they did a really great job. Okay, Cam.
Yeah, well, yeah, two, two things I want to follow up on that I sent to you in comments. And I just want to make sure there's a deliberate reason why they weren't included. Um, I, I talked to a couple of friends of mine on the Hill to make sure of some language I was a little concerned about. Number one was referring to Massachusetts as a state. And, and the rule on the Hill that I was told was the first time you use it, you call it the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And if you'd like to revert and call it a state after that, you can. However, I was encouraged not to do that. They said, we use the word Commonwealth here. And if you go through mass.gov and even if you look at, you know, Michael Cannelly's own page, he doesn't say state once. He says Commonwealth each time, as, as does everybody else. So I would recommend replacing state with Commonwealth.
Okay, we in Virginia are the two who are commonwealths.
Well, there's also, wait a minute, don't forget Pennsylvania and Kentucky.
Oh, are they commonwealths too? I didn't know that.
Yes.
Okay, well, that's an easy fix.
Yep, that's an easy one. The second one is, I, when we talked about this maybe a week ago, I thought we had talked about commingling 40B housing with this and saying that was a poor idea. It's, it's done again on page two or three. And, and it's almost, to me, it's almost a bit of a throwaway. Um, hey, don't forget we're at 7.6 and we have two projects in the pipe. I, 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 I don't understand that tactic here. Um, and, and I would recommend deleting the reference to 40B, but I think you did it for a reason.
Uh, well, that came out of the original, the original document. And I will say that, uh, some people, uh, would have eliminated that altogether, you know, any reference to 40B. And I personally have raised the issue that 40B has nothing to do with this.
Right.
I think that it was included in the initial draft that Kevin did to do what we always do when you talk to the state, which is you're trying to make us do X. We're already doing Y. And that, you know, and that here we're being good doobies, uh, that we're, you know, we're doing everything that we can to increase housing. Uh, uh, and that it's almost a, a throwaway thing that we typically use. Uh, when we review 40B projects, we say, uh, we're not opposed to 40B projects. Look at all the good stuff we've done with 40B, you know, look at how we've been trying to do all of this. We're really nice people, you know, uh, and that is.
That's how I think it comes across, just for the record.
Yeah, and, and I agree with you. I, I personally would not have included the 40B stuff. I, I would have eliminated it altogether, but I recognize that it's part of our usual, you know, sort of song and dance when we're, you know, talking to the state. And Kevin's got his hand up.
Oh, I saw.
No, simply put, you know, it's, it's message in the letter, what the state thinks and the reason they're forcing our hand is that we're not doing anything, simply put. And this is an opportunity to say, hey, we're doing something. And they know this, but it's good to kind of shine a light on it that, again, we're not trying to be part of the problem or stubborn as a small community. But hey, we're, we're participating, we're moving the needle and we're doing these things or these things are happening to us. Um, that are things that the state wants us to achieve, whether it's directly through this new, new law and the regu- regulations around it or, um, whether it's stuff we're doing on our own, they, they, oh, they should add up to what I think their ultimate goal is at housing and economic development. So that, that was the intent.
So, so I think we could very easily take that 40B piece out of it. It's just a phrase in the first sentence, uh, second, excuse me, the second sentence. I, I suspect that might work out fairly well, just to take that one phrase out so that it's not, like you said, a kind of funny hot button in the middle of a different thing that we're talking about, which is this regular housing. And so the suggestion I would have is to, after 7.3%, after 7.3%, put a period and, and therefore remove the words with two 40B projects in the pipeline successful, you know, that, that whole piece there. And then continue further, comma, in 2019, MAPC performed. And so we catch that stuff, Kevin, as you said, we're doing things, but we don't have to throw that 40B in there because I tend to agree, it, it does muddy the waters because this is not 40B, it's different. And, you know, you're carpet about, you're talking about 40Bs, but this is different. I, I would, I would tend to agree with, with you, Cam.
Right, well frankly, frankly, I would too. We left it because no one flagged it, you know, in the course of all of the review. Um, and I, I'd be happy to take it out. Uh, we do not know what the future is for these so-called, you know, these supposed 40B projects that are, you know, kind of brewing in town. Um, and I, I think it would be better. I mean, but typically we always say, we're not opposed to housing, we're not opposed to this, you know, we're not opposed to that, you know, we like housing. Um, and so we're trying to do the best we can.
Anybody have a problem taking it out? We don't have to do a lot of voting here.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Um, it seems to me that we're, we're putting in half the sentence and leaving out the other half. It's like, if you just put in the affordable housing in Topsfield is over 7.3%, it's like, well, how does that fit? That feels to me like it just got thrown in. If you don't put the other piece in that says, and we're, we've got two developments in process to increase housing in Topsfield, bringing that up to 10%. I, I think saying that we've got a couple in process shows we are doing something. It's not, we're resting on our laurels. We've got two major developments underway to help with housing. So it seems weird to stop.
40B isn't something that we're doing. 40B is something that a developer is doing against.
You can say, and there are two major developments in town, which will increase this to 10%. I mean, if you're going to put it in at all, otherwise I'm not sure that the affordable housing in Topsfield is over 7.3%, it's like, what does that got to do with the price of apples? I don't.
Well, what it has to do with the price of apples is that our 7.3% is higher than many of these other communities. Uh, that, that we're far higher, uh, than Boxer and, and some of the other communities. I don't know where Ipswich stands right now with all the 40Bs that they've been dealing with. But, uh, Topsfield, uh, in our sort of little region here, uh, particularly in the septic communities, has achieved, uh, much higher rate of affordable housing than the other communities have.
Maybe, but that's not what their issue is. We're not a, addressing, you know, are we at a level for affordable housing? They're just talking about pure houses. They just want more houses, so.
Right, but that's part of the, uh, I'm sorry, I won't go off on a tirade here, but this thing says nothing about affordable or moderate rate housing. You know, the legislation, you know, doesn't say that they're trying to create affordable or moderate rate housing. It just talks about housing and that housing can be very expensive, you know, however it is developed. Uh, so, um, there is no reference to that. And that really bothers me if that's the intent of this legislation. Why, why isn't there something that's encouraging, uh, the kind of housing that people are looking for? But that's, I won't go off on my little rant about that. Uh, I don't, I don't think anyone would mind, um, if we, you know, uh, change that a little bit. Or, um, some have eliminated that whole section about how well we have done. Uh, but I've left it in for your consideration.
Kevin, did you have a thought?
Um, no, it, it's, um, what they're looking for is density housing and that's what 40B is. And that it's, whether it's affordable or non-affordable, I think that it was sort of a, hey, just as Martha said, I mean, we, there is a significant percentage comparatively to other communities that we're doing our part when it comes to the affordable component. It's not directly related, but the, the actual projects themselves, that the fact that they're in a process, whether they happen or not is another story, but that they're, that's there. Again, going back to the ultimate intent of saying, hey, we're doing things. Things are happening in Topsfield. You don't need to force our hand. That's all.
Yeah, and that's something, as I say, I, I was willing to leave it in because, uh, whenever we communicate about this sort of thing, we start by, or we include the fact that we're not, you know, particularly opposed to housing, that in fact we're trying to do housing, that, you know, that this is something that we're very aware of. Um, it's just that what they have dumped on us is unacceptable.
I would leave it in because I think it's one of two pieces in that paragraph that adds up to the last sentence that says each of these steps has shown forward thinking and is in line with the goal of adding housing, which I think that's the key piece, not that it's affordable, but we are adding housing to our town. I, I like it, but I'll go with what the group feels.
No, no, that's, that's certainly fair enough. And, um, as I say, that, that particular paragraph, you know, did get a lot of, you know, sort of back and forth, you know, as to whether we should include all of it or part of it. Um, uh, again, because 40B and this thing really are not related to each other except for the idea that 40B was designed, you know, designed to create housing and so was this designed to create housing. Different creatures altogether.
Would we be, would we be legitimate if we said that the affordable housing in? Would we be, would we be legitimate if we said that the affordable housing in Topsfield at 7.3% exceeds, you know, averages of Massachusetts towns?
I'm not sure whether it does for all Massachusetts towns. Well, certainly there are some Massachusetts towns that have none. I mean, so I don't know what the average would be, uh, but there are many communities that no one wants to build anything in. And so they don't have 40Bs. You know, they're, they're far, you know, places that are pretty far away.
I guess my, the, Martha, my last swat at this would be, cause I, I do think it's wrong to put the word 40B and the phrase 40B in there. Could we, could we, but could we dump it? Could we, could we keep, if you want to say affordable housing in Topsfield is over 7.3%. Let's just dump the, with two projects in the pipeline. I know, Kevin, you want that because it shows that we're.
I think that two density projects, Mr. Brown, if you just, you know, you start by saying we're, Topsfield's taking a leadership role or some, some fluff language at the top. And then say at a 7.3% with two significant projects in the pipeline. You don't have to say 40B.
Well, but I, I do want us to be careful about this. Uh, 57 Perkins Row is really kind of troubled right now. And we don't know where that is going. Uh, and the other one that is rumored, but we've never seen anything about it. You know, who knows what's happening with that. Uh, so I'm very reluctant to, you know, tote two 40B projects when we have nothing on one of them and the other one is struggling. I mean, so I'd be happy to take out, you know, that, that piece.
Can I suggest this to, you're right, the, the 40B is the thing that kind of sticks out because it has such an emotional thing to it. So simply say instead, with two affordable housing projects in the pipeline. If successful, will increase our stock beyond 10%.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I just don't want us to be too sanguine about these two projects, um, because they're, both of them, you know, have issues.
Well, I think, I think pipeline, the word pipeline alone is not definitive. It doesn't say it's going to happen. It says in consideration.
And we can take the word project, uh, pipeline out too. We could say.
No, it's good. No, I would keep it.
That if successful.
Okay, that's true. Yeah, yeah.
Dick, would you be so kind as to do the track changes on this section?
Sure.
Okay, um, and I'd like to get them out. I, I don't think the planning board would have any problems because that was a section that they really weren't that concerned about. They're more concerned.
Nobody has a problem trying to change the four, 40B to something else like affordable housing. Is that okay? Is that enough to say?
That's right.
Around that?
Yes.
Great. Okay, good, 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 good.
Any other, uh, comments, Boyd?
So.
Can you let Boyd go, Dick? And then?
Yes, of course, yes.
Well, I'm not going to say anything terribly substantive. So if you've got something serious to say, go ahead and say it.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm up. Uh, all I have is just very simple, um, uh, markup, um, tech typo type things. And I almost don't have to go through them maybe, but if you want to, I will. Just, just before the first bullet there of dramatic increase in traffic, the two lines above that, it ends housing stock with two periods, take out one period there. Then in the increased traffic, I don't know if you caught this one or not, Lynn, but in the fourth bullet down, the word should be burden instead of burdening. So I'm going to take the ING.
Actually, I passed those over to Debbie earlier. I thought she had, Debbie, had you incorporated these? Cause I think that was one and the double period was another one.
Right, and I thought, I thought I sent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I'm looking at an old one that I have.
Yeah, I thought I sent the, you know, the, the edited version, the one with these corrections.
With the title corrected? Then it's, yeah, okay. If you did that, then, then you got them all. That's it. Okay.
You might have found some, Dick. I found four. And, and Debbie had said she put them up here. And actually, you know, I trust that she did and they're probably in here somewhere. I can't find exactly, um, where they, this is the clean copy.
There was a the that was, had a blank in it. Apparently you caught all of these things. So they're just typos and I, and I prefer not to spend time on typos.
I think we have them.
If anybody's okay with just fixing the typos, you know, there's a semicolon that came out or something or something. Uh, yep, that's it. Okay, good.
Okay.
No, all, all comments, you know, really gratefully received here. I, I mean, because this has been quite the production to try and get, you know, the multiple versions, you know, pulled together, you know, into a single document. And so, uh, if you're happy with it, I'm happy.
Boyd, any comment before we take a vote?
Uh, yes, um, I wanted to thank Martha and the planning board for all the work that they did putting this thing together. And it sounds like Dick was involved with that a little bit, but he's going to be the way it sounds. So that's good. I'm, I'm impressed with all the attention that you guys are, uh, putting into this thing. Uh, as I've said before, uh, this thing is so poorly conceived, in my opinion, that it's going to be terribly watered down by its over, by, by the time it's over with. Now, I'm going to make another wager. I'll bet you a dollar that nobody will read it. And if they do, it won't make any difference. Now let's move on.
All right. I also just want to thank Chief for all that data, um, the traffic data, because that, that tells a great story and it's very supportive of this letter.
Right. Now there was, uh, just so everyone knows, Greg Crum was involved and Holger was involved and Dick was involved in looking at the water, uh, data. That we didn't include an attachment for that because the actual information is included in the letter itself. Um, is that right, Dick?
Yeah, you could run the calculator. You'd have to figure out how we can call it 41, but it's pretty obvious to somebody. You have that many units and that kind of beds, what it, what it would be.
So, so there was another, and so Greg was involved in this and, uh, Holger deserves a great deal of credit, uh, for the work that he did on the water analysis and the traffic analysis. And so that was great, you know, as a starting point for a lot of this.
Hey, terrific. All right. Could I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the letter dated.
It actually isn't dated.
March 23rd, 2020, 2022, uh, in response to the MBTA new multifamily zoning requirements.
Uh, as amended?
As, as amended, thank you.
Second, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to roll call. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Excuse me, aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez's aye, so it passes four to zero. Thank you, everyone, and thank you again, Martha.
This will go out under the signature of the chairs. Is that the way we're going to do it? Or do we want to give it the full everybody's signature?
I don't know. What did you do in the past? What do you think was most effective?
You know, typically we've just done it, if I'm not mistaken, it's just been, um, the chairman of whatever board, uh, has been sending the diatribe, you know, to the state. But, uh, at my concern about trying to gather all of the signatures, um, from all of the board members, um, unless we don't actually have signatures. Some people are, are, are not able to get in to sign the letter, uh, you know, they're, they're traveling, they're somewhere, you know, you can't get them. And by the time you find them all, it's too late. Uh, so, uh, either just list the names of the, you know, the chairs sign. And then the names of the board members are listed below, uh, or you just do the chairs. Cause it's just, logistically, it's very difficult to get all of these people.
So I think it's just as simple as just before the, on the signature, just signature line, just under the line, it says, for the Board of Selectment, Lynn Bermudez Chair. For the Planning Board, Martha, Planning Chair. I think that's the appropriate way to do it. You, you, because you, you're speaking for the entire boards in that case. It's great. Okay.
Exactly. No, that, that's fine.
Yeah, Dick, if you don't mind incorporating that change as well, um, before you send it over to Martha. Thank you.
If you can get it over to me and we can, uh, I can then send it out to the planning board. Um, and I, I don't think that this is going to be a big issue, but we'll have our meeting tomorrow night. And hopefully all will go well.
Okay, and then who actually sends it out? Who, who is sending this? Kevin, is that you?
That will go back to, to you guys. I mean, you know, you can send it out from Town Hall and proper, you know, stationery and the whole business.
We'll make sure signatures are required and then we'll make sure we get it to the right place. There's a, there's a place, there's a, an address on the, on the state's website that they, where you can submit to.
Are they taking these, um, electronically, Kevin?
I believe so. And I would, I would also suggest see, seeing our state delegation on the, uh, on the letter. It wasn't in the draft I sent out, but making sure that they have a copy as we, we are reaching out to a state agency.
I think that, that's very, a very good idea. Okay.
All right, terrific.
Well, it's been very fun. The past few days.
So anything else? That's it for our agenda. Any other items before we adjourn? Comments? No. Hearing none? Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, um, and roll call, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Cam?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez's aye, passes four to zero. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate your time and, and all your efforts.
Good night.